So, hi, welcome to Who, What, When, Where and Why We Do Our Shadows. I'm your host as always, Brian Dressel. With me as always is, oh my god. I don't think he's gonna like me for this one, but Matt Bella Swan Zombie Dog Dykes.
Was she even a vampire?
In the last movie, of course she becomes a vampire. Don't you remember? She's climbing trees and stuff? I mean, we all watched every Twilight film, right?
No.
Oh, no.
Fuck!
I, I misunderstood that and was like, you can either watch Twilight or, you know, go vomit for two hours.
Or not.
And I chose the vomiting. I thought that would be better for me.
My knowledge of Twilight are all the awful pop culture references and homages, and so I, I think I got the best version of it.
Yeah, I definitely didn't watch all the movies. Anyhow, that was Joel Bill Compton DeWitt.
I, I'm glad that wasn't Bill Cosby, because that's where my mind was. Kinda don't when he started with that. He, he's, he might be a type of vampire, but...
I feel like he's an energy vampire.
Let's not speak of him anymore.
Yeah, I would have done with that. Oh, god, yeah. No, Bill Compton's a, well, he's a horrible, horrible vampire, but he's not, you know, he's a great guy compared to Bill Cosby.
I mean, who isn't?
You know, it's, it's always the ones that act like they're so pious, right?
Yeah. And that's something that Bill Compton does not do. Well, he does sometimes, but you know. I haven't watched True Blood in a long time, so I could be totally off the mark there. And last but not least, we also have Mr. Drew, Grandpa Munster Staten.
Oh, I like that one.
Yeah, that's a good one, right?
That's really good.
I will take that any day of the week and twice on Sunday. I'm fine with that.
Yeah, he, he might be the best vampire of the bunch.
Better than Bill Cosby for certain.
Oh, dear god.
I feel so bad that I brought him into this show. Like, ugh, shut it down. Time for a new podcast.
No, let Brian take the blame. I'm, I'm good.
Fuck. Alright, how do we get, how do you transition away from that fucker? It's, it's kinda difficult. Uh, let, let's just...
A hard cut.
Hard cut. Today's episode is city council. If last week's episode didn't get you into this show, this one certainly fucking will.
Oh my god, yes.
That would be my review of this episode. I don't know how you get through the pilot and not go, "I need to watch this show", but if somehow you went, "Maybe this one should solidify your opinion."
Maybe if you're a werewolf. Werewolves might not love this show.
And if you didn't like it after this one, and if, if you didn't like it after this episode, I, I don't want you in my life, to be honest.
I would honestly say, like, you know, like, there's those shows out there where people say, "Oh, you gotta give it like, half a season", or "You gotta give it like, the first three seasons, and then the backseat three seasons are gonna be great", you know, just trudge through those first three. This one's not one of those. I would say if you can get through episodes one and two, if you're digging it, you're good to go. If you are not, there's the exit.
Yeah, this show knows how much I value my time. Like, that, that pilot, how many pilots are that good, right? And, and we talked about it, they, they do sort of like the try and true documentary format, but like, uh, they take them such good ways, such good ways.
I mean, the way they use the documentary, of like, having the Baron actually acknowledge there's a documentary film crew there, like, "Oh, are they here for me?" I, I just love that.
There, there is a joke later in the season about the crew, about how in danger they are, that just kills me every time. And it's just this, like, nearly swallowed, throwaway joke, like, way down in the season, like, "Oh yeah, and then, you know, your crew, oh, your crew's actually in a lot of danger. You should go back and get them." Like, the fact that they keep the documentary part of the show is so smart. It's something like The Office never did. Parks and Rec, I never really think fully went, "Is this a documentary or not?", like, a lot of shows kinda like, "No, no, no, it's just the format. It's not actually part of it." This show very smartly keeps, well, Office did at the very end of both the British and the American.
It really fucked it up. Like, I think that when they actually started addressing that, just, it just became, it was almost like jumping the shark. But in this show, it's worked because they've done it from the get-go.
Well, yeah, when Xerxes attacks somebody with a boom pole, you know you have a weird show.
Yeah, yeah, The Office's problem is that they brought in the actual camera crew as actual individual characters, right?
Yeah.
It, it's breaking that third wall a little bit too hard.
Yeah, this one does it just like, they nail that, like, right down the line of just enough acknowledging the camera crew and that they're actual people, and also, they don't really matter. That's not what we're here for, but it's just enough to use them for comedic effect. Like, they just nailed the right balance. Um, but let's actually talk a little bit about today's episode. Uh, Drew, do you think you could do a quick breakdown of what happens in today's episode?
God, um, yeah.
If you can't, I can do it. I really just...
No, 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 I, no, I, I'm fine with it. So, so the Baron, um, uh, charges them with taking over something. They're not sure if it's Manhattan Island, or America, or just North America, because who the fuck wants Canada? And, uh, that, I actually love Canada. That's just in the show. Like, it's a bit, it's a bit. Don't hate me. Anyway. So they're like, "How do we do that?", and Colin Robinson overhears them, who's like, "Oh, so you need to talk to the people that govern things. I know exactly how to do that." So he takes them to a city council meeting, and it becomes this huge, nonexistent power grab, for trying to gain control over the, over the city council using draconian methods of pretty much everything. And we get, um, in this, uh, this episode, we get our, um, uh, what the fuck is his name? What's, uh, who's the? Hang on, what we do? What is the name of the, of the guy from the movie that they turn, that everybody?
Nick.
Nick.
Nick. We get our Nick character, um, because Jenna is the, uh, is, um, the mark of Nadia, because they're like, "We found a bunch of virgins", and it's a LARPing group. So they go and spy on them, and the, Nadia's like, "Why are they so mean to her?", so she turns her so that she doesn't have to take people's shit anymore. And she is our Nick character for, for the, um, for, for season one.
I love the look on Nadja's face.
Beanie Feldstein.
When she says, um, "Oh, I should probably, you know, I'm a virgin", just looks away and just like...
This show does that so great.
When they first see them, she's like, "I do not want to eat them. They will taste sad."
Just Matt Berry just going, "Let's just eat the mean one. No, you can't eat the mean one. I know what you're bloody like. If you eat the mean one, you're gonna be mean all night."
What I love about this scene is like, they say they're all sad, but it is sad. I, I don't have any experience actually playing in a Dungeons and Dragons type group, but I assume they have more character usually and are a bit more animated through all, all of it than what that is.
Well, okay, now, let me just stop you right there, because I, I just wanna tell, I just wanna, for the masses out there, not everyone that plays D and D are LARPers. They are a special, uh, they're a special group. Like, when, when I play on the many games that I play, I don't dress up in character usually, um, and it's not, uh, I'm also not a dick to my players, which that guy totally was, but, um...
It's also not expected. If you're playing a D and D game, they don't expect you to show up in costume. Somebody might be like, "Oh, awesome, look at you!", but it would never be like, "Where's your costume, brah?"
Yeah, I, I'm showing my ignorance here. The only knowledge I have of D and D is really from that Paul Rudd movie.
Not even the episode of Community?
I haven't wa, oh, that's a really good one.
Yeah, it's a really good one.
It really is. Is, is that the one that got scrubbed out because of Jane having, wearing blackface?
Yep, yes. Cause he was, he was playing a drow, which, I still don't understand why they did that. It was...
Anyhow, the rest of the episode, uh, did we get to everything?
Uh...
Is that pretty much it? Oh, I feel like the only thing you missed was, uh, like, what happens with city council.
Oh, oh, right, yeah. We want the spoilers, because it's a, it's a breakdown. Uh, so, yeah, so, uh, um, so Nandor, um, Nandor, uh, hypnotizes the guy who's running against the current city council chairperson, while Laslow tries to, um, uh, what's the...
Woo-ha?
Yeah, woo-ha, yeah, exactly. Laslow tries to woo said city council chairperson. He goes to her house and, like, I love, oh my god, the scene on the porch where she's like, she double-takes like, three times where she's like, "Do you wanna, like, are we gonna have sex? I, I have a child in my hand. No, we can't do that." Raccoons, they're the real problem. And then the next morning, he pied pipers all the raccoons together, or that night, I should say, kills them all and leaves them in a pile three feet high on her porch.
But he erased her memory, so she has no fucking clue why she had that.
Yeah, she has no clue. She has no clue. Um, and, uh, Nadja doesn't, uh, doesn't partake of this, because she's too busy with, with Jenna. But my favorite part of this episode, and I know we're jumping ahead, because we're probably gonna talk about, but is Colin Robinson, absolutely hands down. Like, he makes them take the bus, which they then, like, they bat out of to sit on the roof, because they're like, "They're never gonna find it. I don't know why they left", but then it's, they're just sitting on the roof, like, in the train style.
That's a joke they've already done a couple times. And, and it works every time.
It absolutely does.
I mean, at the very opening of this episode, like, you know, "Well, screw this, I'm flying there". Bat! He doesn't have the address. And then it's like, "I don't have the address."
Yeah, that was first episode. It's, it's, yeah, we're only on episode two. But, but Colin Robinson, he loves going to, um, city council, because he just drains the energy out of everybody in the room with his fucking, like, dollar store full stack of note cards he has prepared of just bits he wants to talk about. And he gets a little bit of satisfaction of it.
I love the way he describes it. It's like, "A quick mega feed."
Yeah, a quick mega feed. Cause like, he gets done on the mic and then he turns and you just see the, with his eyes glowing, which is just amazing.
The messing around with the microphone and all that, like, that sound that it makes.
It's just like, "Here we go."
You know, I, I thought the...
Go ahead.
I think my, sorry. I think my favorite part about that character is, I totally thought he was faking being a vampire in the first episode. And it's even better, and it's even better that he actually is a vampire, because he's so milli, millatose, you know?
My favorite part is at the end. So, at the end, like, the, uh, the charmed, uh, runner for city council ends up going ballistic and he gets tackled by, uh, uh, by like, the man-at-arms, the, the policeman that's on duty there. Um, the, he's almost a bailiff, but like, because he's threatening the city council member that, that Laslow is trying to woo at the last meeting, and just chaos ensues. And then it cuts back, and you don't notice it right, right away, because people, like, they're all talking amongst themselves, "Well, this is just crazy", but Colin Robinson is just gorging himself on what's happening. And you don't see it until like, yeah, and it's like, it's blue eyes, open mouth, as soon as it cuts to them, but everyone's talking, so you don't see it, and then you do, and it's like, "Holy fuck", this, this is the punchline to this entire episode, is him.
And it's even funny the second time you go back, because you know that it's happening, so then you're like, you're immediately looking at Colin Robinson, just realize that, like, from the get-go of like, that cut, he's been doing it for that entire time as well.
Yeah, and then everybody tries to leave, he's like, "I can't get up right now, if you know what I mean."
Like...
It's just fucking chef's kiss. Like, it is just fantastic.
And I love that he's got this little, like, shake to him as well. Like, he's so excited, he's kind of shaking, just, "Ah, ah, ah."
He has pure, pure glee. Like, he is the happiest he's ever been in this show. And that sounds stupid, since we're two episodes in.
Yeah. But there's just something, like, if you went back to The Office, like, we keep mentioning The Office, just because they're similar in style, but like, this guy came from The Office. He was, uh, what was his name, Joel? You watch The Office more than I did.
Oh, I don't remember his name, but he was one of the workers in the warehouse.
Something like that.
Yeah.
Oh, uh, Mark, uh, Prost, Prost.
I think that's, yeah, uh, but in the... You go back to The Office and you watch his episodes. He's not in a whole bunch, he's in like, the later seasons, and he's okay. He's mostly, uh, um, I'm blanking on his name too. Fucking, not Jim, the other one.
Asian Jim.
Nate.
Yes, Nate, yes. Nate, uh, Nate is the show. Like, you watch that character, he, he's kind of a dullard, kind of annoying, but he's, he's very funny in the show, but it's just a wildly different character than this one. And like, this show, like, his jokes are more subtle. Like, it's not like he's just like, "Oh, the joke is that he's an idiot." The joke in this one was just his facial expression. And he stole the scene, like, everything else, like, nothing is focusing on him. The camera isn't, the scene isn't, nothing is, but he's the funniest thing in it, just with a look on his face.
So, what, my, my ignorance here, would you classify him as a character actor? Is that what he is?
Yeah, most likely.
Yes. Yeah, absolutely. He's absolutely a character actor.
Yeah.
When I first saw him on this, because I haven't seen, um, all of the, uh, all of The Office, but when I first saw him on this, I thought he was, uh, what the hell is his name? I thought he was part of Kids in the Hall.
Oh, okay.
When I first saw this, I was like, "Oh, it's that guy", which if you don't know what Kids in the Hall is, it is a Canadian Stedt show from like, early 90s. But if, it, you, you should look it up. Or, actually, no, it's late 80s, uh, 88 is when it was.
Oh, wow.
But I, I thought he was part of that cast, because he, um, he reminded me a lot of, uh, not Kevin McDonald, let's see, Mark McKinney, who is actually on, um, uh, he was on Superstore for the whole thing. He was the, the...
Right. You know, I see it now, now, because I know, I know him from Superstore, uh, and it's the facial expressions. I think, like, uh, Mark McKinney does very similar facial expressions in Superstore.
Yeah, I could see it.
But yeah, he's, he's absolutely fantastic. I love it.
And it's one of those characters, like, when you watch the pilot, I could even see what Joel was talking about, where you almost think he's faking being a vampire, because it's just like, a minimal thing.
Yeah.
And then, and, and part of me is like, "I'm sure that was never the plan. I'm sure this was always the plan to keep him the end of the vampire."
Well, there is this one bit where it's like, you actually see that he is actually an energy vampire, because it's like, when he walks out of the room from the virgins, his, his eyes are glowing blue. But if you blink, you've missed it. Like, if you blink at that moment, you've missed that, and it just looks like he's just a dullard who's pretending to be an energy vampire.
And, and maybe I missed it, but I didn't see that visual cue in the first episode, so I...
Maybe you blinked.
Oh, really?
Yeah, you could have blinked. You could have looked away for half a second and you totally miss it. And that's something, like, it just speaks volumes about this show, is like, it feels like the pilot really was a pilot. Like, and a lot of times, especially in today's, like, streaming culture, pilots don't really exist as much anymore. Like, they still shoot them all the fucking time, but they're not, like, when you watch a pilot, it feels more just like one of the episodes. It wasn't an episode built to sell a show, which is technically what a pilot is. And this one, when you watch that one, it's like, "Oh, that's what this was", like, there's a lot of ideas here that, you know, they could have been something, they could have not have been, but they were clearly shot at different times. And I think it worked spectacularly, because they had such a good plan.
Yeah, I think what it is as well, you can tell, like, the pilot, um, for this show was, it was, that was the only one they wrote. They were like, you know, "This is the pilot, you know, we'll write that, we'll have like, an idea of, you know, a basic idea of what we wanna do with the series, but we'll write that, that'll be the first one we'll write." I think, and nowadays, a lot of shows, like Netflix especially, but you don't write a pilot...
I'm gonna stop right there. We can't talk about Netflix on this network.
Oh, sorry, yeah, um...
Sorry. I promised my boss I wouldn't.
Another thing's like, on Hulu. Um, like, you know, like, any of these streaming services, like, they, they won't just write a pilot, they'll write a first series, the whole first series, and then present it. So I think, like, yeah, it is, it's a rare breed nowadays, where it's like, you know, they've written a pilot, they've got a basic idea of what's gonna happen with the rest of the series, but they have just written a pilot and used that to sell the show, not written an entire series and used it to sell the show.
So, so is that because more often, they now choose writers or producers with more of a pedigree and experience to write these shows? Or is it just the nature of the business that's changed?
It's just the nature of the business. Yeah. It's the nature of the business that's changing, because I mean, you're not gonna get in, you're not gonna get in a meeting if you don't have your whole series written. So I'm sure it was written in some version, it's just the one that was polished and ready to go was the pilot, but like, the difference here is that it is Taika and Jermaine Clement coming into a meeting, so they don't have to have it written, because they are very, very well-known, established people. So, I, I mean, I'm filling in a lot of blanks that we could be dead wrong, and Taika could, like, listen to this episode, he won't, but he could, and he'd be like, "Oh, fuck you, I had everything written from the get-go. I had all ten seasons written. What the fuck's wrong with you?", I'm just saying how it felt to me when I was watching it. Um, but let's, let's spend a little bit more time on the actual episode itself.
I mean, they probably wrote it, but didn't show anyone the script.
That could be very possible. But we're, we're skipping over something, we're not skipping, but we're not talking about something in this episode that is just absolutely amazing. Uh, Drew mentioned it really well in the breakdown, but we need to talk about Jenna. Like, we need to, just everything with Jenna and Nadia.
Oh.
The way Chewie and I have watched this series, oh my god.
Yeah.
Chewie and I have watched this season, I think, three times. I've watched this whole, this is my fourth time going through it. I think Chewie's watched it with me twice, uh, and then I did it once on my own. This is the first time ever watching it with Chewie the other night, where she's like, "I've never picked up on the fact that Jenna thought she was about to bang her."
Yes.
She's like, "I'm just so, like, cued into the fact, like, oh, she's getting turned into a vampire right now. Oh, she must have figured out she's a vampire, and she's getting turned into a vampire. I guess that's kinda cool. I, I guess, could use a little more explanation", I'm like, "No, you're mis, you're misreading it". She's, she's getting banged right now.
The, the preamble before that too, when she's talking about like, "Oh, I've, I've done some stuff with my boyfriend before, and, uh, you know, we filmed things, and it's because he likes it, and he told me that he, I like it."
Tells me I like it. Oh, god.
God damn it.
Beanie is so goddamn funny. She is one of the funniest people working today. I'm so glad she's in this show. For a little bit, she's in it, because, god damn it, she's funny.
You, you've seen Booksmart, right?
I have it. My sister keeps telling me I need to.
Oh, my, damn it. Like, it is, shit, it, it, watch it, that's all I have to say.
I know, I know, I need to.
Oh, god, it's so good.
But in this episode, when she's finally, like, when Nadia's like, sucking her blood and everything, she just keeps talking. Nadia's like, "Shush, shush, no need to talk, darling."
And the whole time, she's thinking, "This is some introduction to some sexual fantasy."
Yeah, she thinks she's just getting like, a crazy hickey at, nah. Just Nadia's eyes when they turn like, all beast-like, and just like, "Shush, shush."
And then she takes like, a small sip of her blood and she gets the same eyes, she's like, "Okay, yeah."
My favorite thing was that, though, is, where she says, um, it's, it's, it's called, um, this, and this is my blood. "Oh, why do you call it that?", "Well, it is the blood from my bloody, the blood from my body, so I call it my blood."
There, there's something really great about when they're back in her dorm room too, and she's like, looking like she's dying, and her roommate's like, "Maybe it's mono."
Yeah.
It's not mono, and then she projectile vomits all over the place.
Which you know, um, like, if you saw the movie, it's probably because she ate regular food.
Sure, yeah.
No, it wasn't blood vomit, though.
Oh, that's true, that's true. Maybe it's just part of the process of turn.
Cards on the table, they, they don't use blood vomit in the TV show. I don't think FX allowed it. So, when they do the vomit now and they eat TV, on TV, they do puke green. It comes back later in, in an amazing scene that I don't wanna spoil for you, but it, you will be disappointed if you're expecting blood puke, and it's not coming this time.
Dance answers.
Well, I thought it was, I never thought it was that she ate food. I thought it was just her puking up all of her guts, because she doesn't need them anymore.
Yeah, well, I figured that, because, um, when Nick turns in, uh, he does have like, you know, I think he pukes as well, don't they?
Well, no, we don't see him turn. He just, by the time we meet him, he's just floating out the window.
We see a little bit, though, don't we? Um, no, because he's like, you see, like, with his, uh, bleeding from his eyes, he got him and the, the doctors.
Oh, yeah, yeah, he pukes then too. But yeah, so that's, I just assumed it was puking out the organs you no longer need, because you're turning into a different thing. That's what I took it as. I, I don't know why I just made that leap with zero explanation, but that's just kinda what I assumed was happening. Um, what, what have we missed in this episode? I feel like we didn't really talk about Nandor or, uh, Laslow at all, and we kinda skipped over Laslow's raccoon thing, because Drew covered it so well in the, uh, in the breakdown. Is there anything else you guys wanted to mention about that? Because it is goddamn hilarious.
I mean, like, Las, Laslow, uh, describing the granddaughter, I think, oh, what a lovely little nibble she would be. Just the, the woman goes, "Excuse me?"
And just, he gets so frustrated and wipes their memories, and just the way he does it, "You won't remember a thing about it, and you, my little darling, won't remember a thing about a damn thing."
Guys, that, that baby, that baby is going to have amnesia.
Yeah.
It's gonna be so...
Forever.
What, what an am, oh, man. Man, what are the implications that are already being set up in this episode?
Right? I, I also love that, like, his immediate reaction is like, "Oh, I need to get these raccoons to fuck off. I'm gonna go talk to them, you know, I'm a beast, they're a beast, you know, I can just, you know, speak to them as brothers. That motherfucker bit me."
I love that. Uh, when he just walks up to go, "Hello, my, my little nighttime brother. Fuck me." "Fucking thing just bit me", but that will heal immediately. And there we are.
And just the shot of him playing the Pied Piper flute and the raccoons all coming up to him just fucking cracks me up. Oh, it's some good shit.
Something about Nandor that, I don't know if we touched on it or not, when he goes up to address the city council, and he is just going on his rant of how, you know, they're gonna be doing it. And Martha's just like, "Well, if you, if you want to talk about, this is about city ordinances right now, and we have an open session, and it's two months from now." The, the mundanity really just works really well as a contrast.
And I love how Nando goes with it as well. Nand, Nandor completely goes with it. He's like, "Oh..."
Oh, yes, I would love to. I also, my favorite thing...
But Nando, when he goes, when he goes up to like, guys, I was like, "What a nice little bitch you've got there." The whole thing, like, being, and, right, and they...
Scared little man watching a sad little bitch.
And like, the way he tells him out through the ether, and like, "Doug Peterson, I call you through the ether", "Yes, master?", "No, not you, Guillermo, I was calling Doug Peterson", "If I wanted you, I'd just call you regular, not through the ether."
And they say, "I can hear you. Hi, Doug."
The way that scene ends with the "Hi, Doug" just is so good.
Just, just his awkward friendliness the whole time is, is just a great contrast to him being this awful vampire. And I, I'm hoping they keep mining that well, or did, did you know well, you know?
I, I will say this, without saying anything more, he's a really big fan of the Dream Team, and that's amazing. That's all I'm gonna say, because that'd come back for a little while, but, oh my god. Yeah, so they keep that. They, they definitely, don't broke, or don't fix what's broken. What isn't broken? My god, I can talk. Um, is there anything else?
I love Laslow's description of Nandor, though.
Well, hold on, that's gonna get to my, we're getting into favorite parts, we're getting into favorite parts.
Right, nevermind, uh, I, I didn't know if that was gonna be anyone's favorite part.
That is absolutely mine, so, fuck off. I pointed aggressively to my camera when I said that, just so everyone gets a hold of it.
On this radio podcast.
Yep, but I, I still pointed to the camera that's off. Huh, just so you know. Someone got it.
I felt it, I felt it.
Yeah, you can, you can tell, you can tell the emotion better when you people are moving their hands like a muppet.
Can you hear me? They're going crazy.
Who is that? Who is that?
Alright, uh, let's move into favorite parts, and since we're, we're already kind of there with, uh, Matt, uh, mentioning mine, I, I'm gonna jump right into it. And that's when Nandor is explained by Laslow, and it is one of the funniest things, because the way he describes it is, you can tell he's trying to tiptoe around like, "He's a friend of mine, but at the same time, he's kind of an idiot", so I guess you could say he's, uh, unburdened with the blessings of a formal education.
Don't fucking let him see this.
Give him an axe, he's second to none.
Second to none.
Yeah, you wouldn't want him as your barrister, and they'd laugh.
Just, he's so proud of his own joke, and they're just, "Uh, don't let him fucking see this."
Matt Berry is a fucking genius.
He's so funny, but like, that one little bit has so much story in it, like, it's hilarious, but it's also like, speaks volumes to their life together. Like, they know each other very well, that he has these like, very, like, very specific thoughts, but also doesn't wanna offend his friend, but also, "My friend's an idiot, so who cares?", like, it's just, it's all there in this one little quiet beat. So good.
Well, not, like, not only friends, but it's also, it's his roommate, and that is a completely different relationship. Because you don't have to be friends with your roommates, but if you are, it's a whole new ball of wax.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, it's so good. Uh, Matt, what about you? What's your favorite moment?
So mine's when the, um, they're talking about, uh, the, the Baron, like, you know, giving instructions whilst, whilst he's pleasuring them orally, and just, just the line that Laslow has, "He expects you to have listened during the climax." Kills me every time. And then like, as they're going through the list of things that they can do, like, you know, and like, Laslow throwing out, "We could assassinate the king. We don't have a king in America. Even easier." That whole sequence is just incredible.
See, I'm right.
There, there's something I really love about the love triangle between the Baron, uh, Nadja and, uh, Laslow. Like, like, just, they keep on going back and forth, and they end up saying more or less the same thing.
Yeah. Which is awesome, because they're sitting right next to each other, but they never do like, uh, look at each other like, "Right?", "Yeah, it's crazy", like, that never happens, which is, makes me think that there's, they still think they're keeping it a secret from each other.
Yes.
Like, they talked about in the first episode, it's, oh, god. It seems brilliant.
Yeah. Uh, Drew, what about you?
It is definitely the end, uh, with Colin Robinson just fucking gorging himself on everything. And my favorite part is you don't see him right away, because it cuts back with, "That was a fucking gift", or something like that, talking about the pile of... Cuz it cuts back with, that was a fucking gift or something like that, talking about the pile of raccoons. And his eyes are just glowing and he's just taking it all in. And it's happening like the whole time. But if you're concentrating on what people are saying, you don't see it. It's amazing. It's absolutely amazing. It's, that is my favorite part of this episode because for me, that is the punchline of this, of this episode. Is just Colin Robinson the whole time.
It's so good. Uh, last but not least, Joel.
There is a scene that I, I've really enjoyed the times where they juxtapose images with what's being said. And Nadja, Nadja has a, Nadja has a great one. They're describing it. And she starts with, we were so poor.
Quote right now.
We were so poor, we used to use donkey dung for fuel. And then they show like all of them in a drawing, sitting around the, you know, the fire. And then when the donkey dung ran out.
Block print or something.
Uh huh. When the donkey dung ran out, we would then have to burn the donkey. And then they would change the actual picture to show them burning this donkey corpse.
Yeah, donkey on its side on fire.
Yes.
Oh, god.
Oh, god. And then like Nadja's last line on that as well. So yes, I do know what it's like to be mocked and teased and to cry myself to sleep at night by the light of a burning donkey.
Like, don't get me wrong, I've said it before, I love everyone in this show, but like, when we get to the final wrap up of this thing, it, she's gonna be a hard one to replace. It's like my favorite of the show. Like, she nails every line she has.
She is like, they're all spectacular, but there is something about uh, Nadja, just like the, the way like, even like, I think part of it's like the way they edit around her character as well, like in the first episode where it's like um, I can't remember the exact line, but she's basically saying that she likes to chase Laslow around the house. And then it cuts to go, I'm gonna fucking kill you. And then him running away really scared. It's just, it's so perfect.
Oh, yeah. Um, all right, so that is the end of this week's uh, wonderful episode. Next week though, oh boy. So next week's episode, I, I honestly thought was episode four of the show. And I was a little annoyed that I didn't get to watch it this week. And when I started it up, I'm like, oh, oh, here we are. Wonderful. I am very excited. This is uh, this might be my favorite episode of the season. I don't wanna get too spoilery. Um, it also might not be cuz there's some great stuff later. But this one is a fucking brilliant episode. It's called Werewolf Feud. Uh, I'm not gonna give you anything more than that, but it is goddamn brilliant. Uh, so be sure to tune in next week for that. And let's do a very quick round of plugs for our own stuff, and then we'll say goodbye. For this show and every other show on the ATH Network, be sure to check out athpod.com. Jackie Chan month is uh, underway over at Behind the Hype. We're having a lot of fun. We did Drunken Master already. And then this week, or next week, we have uh, Police Story. And then we have Rumble in the Bronx. And then we have Rush Hour. So it's gonna be a, a ton of fun this month. Uh, so be sure to check that out. Uh, other show on the ATH Network is Demon Days. Uh, Drew, what you got to say about Demon Days?
Uh, Demon Days is an actual play, fifth edition uh, podcast. Uh, everybody plays a thirsty tiefling. And um, it's a lot of fun. We are uh, uh, we're in a situation right now that's coming to a head that might change a lot of things, so you should come check it out. Uh, and if you don't want to uh, start from the very beginning, the um, I wanna say the first nine episodes or so, the audio's a little off, so we have a uh, a uh, catch-up episode in there someplace. You can start with that. And then um, yeah. Uh, hilarity ensues.
Yeah, and we just got a, a bunch of new artwork for uh, for my character, the narrator. And it looks fucking sick.
Yeah, I just, yeah, yeah. The bowling one looks awesome. Um, yeah, I'm, I'm really happy with it. Kilowatt, Kilowatt killed it all the time.
Really did. Uh, Matt, what about you? Anything to plug?
Not really.
Perfect. Joel, what are you plugging? I'm just gonna take a no. I'm going to accept your answer. Joel, what are you plugging?
My wife and I do a podcast called Afterthoughts. It is basically a book club where we're going through all of our childhood, uh, young adult novels and stuff we went through in high school. Uh, by the time this comes out, our next episode will be about Half of the Giver. Uh, is something that my wife hasn't actually read that I, I had enjoyed as a kid. And uh, we're, we're basically going through our childhood right now. And we, yes, we will watch that supposedly awful movie once we're done with the book.
Nothing supposed about it. It's a piece of shit. Uh, enjoy. I, I'm very excited to hear your thoughts on the movie. I, I, I should be honest. I turned it off. I, I didn't even finish the fucking thing. So maybe it got better.
Wow, that's.
But I doubt it.
You know, that's.
Joel, Joel's gonna come back and be like, it's the best, the greatest film of all time.
Now, now I know you well enough to know that's, that's a high bar for you to walk out on something.
I, I've walked out of like three movies. So.
I think.
Yeah, so that, that's one of them. It's like that one, um, some movie with Bill Paxton, I forget the name of it, Frailty. Frailty I walked out of. Um, I don't remember the third one. Oh, I didn't actually walk out of the third one. I wanted to, but I felt guilty cuz somebody bought my ticket. It was gonna be Tomorrowland. Fuck Tomorrowland. And with that, I'm gonna say goodbye. I'll see y'all next week. Fuck Tomorrowland and uh, bye, fuck Tomorrowland.
Yeah, fuck Tomorrowland.